Thank you for tuning in to Exeter TV. The meeting will be starting shortly. While we wait, let's learn more about Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 98 and 22. Channel 98 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAA 16 and can be found on Channel 13, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Bi-Weekly Report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.
Good evening, and welcome to the Exeter Zoning Board of Adjustment Meeting for May, May 16, 2023. I'm going to start by introducing the members of the board this evening to my far-left, Laura Montagno, alternate member. Next to her, Joanne Petito, also alternate member. To my immediate left, Teresa Page, is a voting member. To my far-right, far-right wing? Nah, you're not far-right wing. Martha Pennell, a little political talk in there. To my far-right, Martha Pennell, alternate member. To my immediate right is Esther Olson-Murphy, who is a voting member and a clerk, and my name is Bob Pryor. I'm the vice chair, and I'll be sitting in for Kevin Baugh, the chair, who is not here this evening. Order of business will be two items of new business, beginning with the application of Tatiana Roth, and that'll be followed by other business, which is the approval of minutes in the election of officers. So, we have six members this evening from amongst the alternate members. So Esther, myself, and Teresa will be voting from amongst the alternates. Are there any conflicts, or would either of the three of you, would one of you particularly like to vote on the first or the second?
Makes no difference.
Preferences? In either case?
No.
No, no preferences in either case. Why don't we have Laura, you vote on the first?
Okay.
And we'll ask one of the two, Joanne, do you want to, or Martha?
Do you want to?
We have to, we usually have five, don't we?
Yeah, we have to have five, yeah.
Okay.
So you want to vote on the second, then?
Sure.
Okay. So Ms. Montagno will be voting on the first application, which is the application of Tatiana Roth for a special exception per Article 4, Section 4.2, Schedule I, permitted uses in Article 5, Section 5.2, to permit the conversion of an existing single-family residence into three residential dwelling units. The subject property is located at number 70 Front Street in the R2 Single Family Residential Zoning District, Tax Map Parcel Number 72-187, and this is ZBA Case 23-6. Is the applicant with us?
Yes.
Microphone is yours. Yes, you have to talk. Yes, terribly sorry.
So I have to speak into this thing?
You have to speak into that thing, so pull it up towards you. And it's not for us, it's for the
Recording.
The many, many people at home watching this on television.
Yes. My name is Peter Johnson. I represent Tatiana. I have assigned, I don't even know what you call it, letter of authorization allowing me to speak on her behalf.
Very good.
I'm not really sure where I'm supposed to start, however, the criteria for special exception set forth in Article 4.2, Schedule I, I guess I start there, correct?
You can tell us a little bit in common language about what it is you'd like to do, or you welcome to march through the, there's, you know, a fairly extensive list of, or not extensive, we've all read
You've all read through it.
We've all read through the document. Just give us an overview of what it is that the applicant has in mind, if you would, please.
Okay, it's a very large, single-family residence located at 70 Front Street, approximately 4263 square feet. The house was purchased in 2019 by Tatiana and her husband, late-husband John Roth. Their son Peter was accepted to Phillips Exeter Academy, and they were fortunate enough to purchase the house located directly across from the new dorm. Tatiana's husband passed away unexpectedly, December 7 of 2020, and as well as her disabled son, who had passed away earlier in that year. So Tatiana was on the deed and assumed the mortgage, which is a very hefty mortgage. And the only way that we could figure out for her to keep the house would be to convert it into a three-family, so there would be a large owner's unit, and then two smaller units. And the house kind of lends itself to be divided up, where you're not taking down walls or anything like that. It's very specific, where the bottom third would be one apartment, and then the top third would be another apartment, and then the owner's unit would be on the other side, facing the dorm on the left side, I guess, which would have a second floor and a first floor. All three units have separate entrances. There is ample parking with a very large driveway with two brick parking spots, as well as parking on the asphalt, as well as a two-car garage, which Tatiana and her son Peter uses. Peter is at NC State currently, well, he's home now for the summer, looking to transfer to a Boston school. So essentially, that's it. There's town water and sewer. It's a very nice house. There are five bathrooms, five bedrooms. The house was built in 1840? 1840. It's right next to David Bone's house, if you know who David Bone is. No? Okay, anyways. The new dorm is directly across the street. There is another dorm directly across the street. There is a multifamily to the right, which belongs to PEA.
You're essentially surrounded by the Academy.
We're surrounded by the Academy, with the exception of David, who is the only, only single-family next to us, right? Right.
Are there any exterior changes to the property plan?
Zero.
None? Windows, doors? Because you're in the HTC.
Nothing. We would have to go, yeah, before the Historical District Commission to do that, right? But there's no changes. And like I said, there are separate entrances for all three units already existing.
Without cutting new doors?
Without cutting doors, yeah.
So all of the changes will be internal? In your calculation for the multi-unit parking that I saw, it looks like you neglected to add one property, one parking spot for, there has to be a shared spot for up to the first four units, for each four units or up to four.
Yeah, for a total of
One per bedroom plus one for
Yeah, so a total of four. Is that correct?
I don't know how many bedrooms there are. How many bedrooms are there between the three units?
Between the three, well, there's five bedrooms, but one of them is being used as an office, which is on the street, which doesn't have a closet, so it's really not a bedroom.
So you have two one-bedroom apartments and one two-bedroom home?
Yes, exactly.
That's four, so they need five spots, because they need an extra place for a guest, which I think you have, but
There's adequate for five spots, is adequate for seven spots, so.
Okay.
It's a very large.
And there's four existing now?
Four.
Parking spaces, two in the garage, and
And then two brick, but there's also, yeah, on the asphalt, like, I park there all the time.
Okay. We can't hear you when you speak, so let him talk, and if you need to talk, then go to the microphone, if you wouldn't mind, please. Thank you. So are there any other questions from members of the board, to the applicant?
Did I hear, you don't have to go to the historical district, do you?
Not unless there's a change made to the exterior of the property.
That's what I thought, and there isn't?
No, there isn't.
And they don't have to go and
Right. And it is clearly in the HTC. Yeah. Right. Any other questions from members of the board?
Just confirming, it's owner-occupied and two rental units.
Yeah, two, one bedroom.
Two, one owner-occupied unit, and then two rental units.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Terrific, thank you very much. And if there's nothing else you want to add, I'm going to open it up to members of the public. If somebody wishes to speak, then you do get a chance to rebut or respond to any
Great, thank you.
Thank you. At this point, I will open it up to the public if anybody would like to speak on behalf or against the application. Hearing none, no opportunity, no need for you to rebut. So
I was ready.
You were ready? Okay, good. You're all primed, you're ready to go. Good. I'm going to close the public session, then we'll move to deliberations. This seems like a fairly straightforward application. Would somebody like to walk us through the special exception criteria, please? The voting members again, it's Laura, you're on this one, is that correct?
Mm-hmm, that is correct.
Would you like to mark us, walk us through the special exception criteria?
Is that this blue fan? It's on. This one? It's these. All right. Okay, so first, that the use is permitted, a permitted special exception is set forth in Article 4.2, Schedule 1 thereof, which it is. Correct?
Yep.
Yep. That the use is so designed, located, and proposed to be operated, that the public health, safety, welfare, and convenience will be protected. Don't see any issues there.
No.
The proposed use will be compatible with the zone district in adjoining post-1972 development, where it is to be located, adjoining principal uses in existence prior to 1972, generally referred to as grandfather uses, that are not permitted uses as listed in 4.2, Schedule 1. Permitted use shall be considered in determining the compatibility of the applicant's proposed use. It is within the proposed use of the zone.
And there are other multiple unit properties nearby and abutting, so it's
Okay.
It's not changing the character.
It's not changing the character of the neighborhood. That adequate landscaping and screening are provided as required herein. I don't know, was that covered in the, that I
They have plans, you could go by the
But again, with no exterior changes to the property, it really
Doesn't matter.
Doesn't apply in this case.
That adequate off-street parking and loading is provided, and egress and egress is so designed as to cause minimum interference with traffic on abutting streets. There's really no change, and we confirm that there is enough adequate parking.
Correct.
That the use conforms with all applicable regulations governing the district where located, except as may otherwise be determined for large scare developments, which it does. As condition of special exception approval, the applicant may be required to obtain town planner review and/or planning board approval of the site, which I don't think is necessary in this case.
No. It's on town water and sewer, and there's no exterior changes planned to the property, so there's no
Right.
No need for planning board to
That the use shall not adversely affect abutting or nearby property values, which it will not. That if the application is for special exception for bulk storage, we're not doing that, so you, no bulk storage there, right? No. Okay, good. So that's good. And then it's not a professional tech park, so I think we've covered all of the
Yeah.
Criteria.
Would you like to make a motion?
Sure. I'd be happy to. I move that we approve the application of Tatiana Roth for the special exception per Article 4, Section 4.2, Schedule 1, permitted use, and Article 5, Section 5.2, permitted use for the conversion of an existing single-family residence into three-sink residential dwelling units at the property located on 70 Front Street in R2 Single Family Residential Zoning District, Tax Map Parcel Number 72-187, ZBA Case 23-6.
Woof, glad you said that.
That's a lot.
Is there a second?
I would second.
Moved in second, is there a discussion of the motion? Hearing none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We're all set. Pass is 5-0, thank you. Take good care of that property, it's a beautiful building.
It is a beautiful building. Thank you for making that so easy.
Yep. Good.
We're good to go?
You are good to go.
You're good to leave.
Thank you very much.
Let's say hit a bar, but it's Exeter.
It's still early.
Desperate, I suppose, you do. And if it's before eight o'clock.
Epic still opens, wherever.
Okay. Moving on. The application of Christine and Doug Rupp for a variance from Article 9, Section 9.4.5 of the Flood Plane Development Ordinance, to permit the installation of a new individual sewage disposal system within the special flood hazard area, AE flood zone. The subject property is located at 24 Powder Mill Road in the R1 Low Density Residential Zoning District, Tax Map Parcel Number 102-4. This is ZBA Case 23-7. Good evening.
Mr. Pryor, members of the board, my name is Justin Pesce. Good to see you tonight, here tonight on behalf of the applicant, who are Chrissy and Doug Rupp, joined tonight by Chrissy and her daughter, Lorelei Marguerite. Also Chrissy's parents, who are Debbie and Rick Schaefer, they're the owners of the underlying parcel that we're here to discuss. I have with me an attendance also Henry Boyd from Millennium Engineering, whom everybody knows who's the licensed land surveyor in this case. For our presentation, I'll plan to do just a quick overview, provide some factual and procedural context, because it's a little
Procedure especially, it's a little complex.
You'll hear us say, and I'll sort of reiterate a few times, that we're here tonight to get a, really a second variance for the same project. This project was caught up in the changes to the zoning ordinance, which happened in March by the town meeting. But when you get into the details about the relief they already have, which already benefits the project, and the relief that they seek tonight, it's essentially the same relief, it's just packaged a little bit differently. Certainly Doug is here to help, because he's been a good ally through this process, as we've navigated the procedural aspects of it. So I'll do a quick overview, I'll turn it over to Henry to look at the plan with you and go over some of the details and the specifics regarding the proposal for the septic system, which is really the basis in the subject matter of what we're here to talk about. And then obviously, we're available for questions, and I'll go through the statutory criteria as well. So as I said, the goal here really is to get relief, which is substantially similar to the relief that this applicant got in November of 2022 from this board. It was a three-member board that month, and it was a unanimous decision to vote in favor. The Schaefers own a very large parcel on Powder Mill Road, it's 21 acres in size, they've been there for decades. And the goal here is to subdivide, a minor subdivision of that property into two lots. The remnant parcel will remain about 16 acres, that's where the Schaefers will continue to live, in the single-family home, and the detached garage, which is already improvements on that property. And then Chrissy and her family would like to come back to Exeter, where she grew up and was a Blue Hawk with me, class of 2000. And so the goal is for Chrissy and her family to come back and reinvest, really, in the community that she grew up in, and to establish essentially a family compound there on Powder Mill Road. So the new lot will be about five acres in size, and it's really, as we tried to detail in the filing, quite well-suited for the proposal here. We're in the R1 district, obviously, where the minimum acre size there is two acres. Very rural, I'm sure people know the area, or perhaps drove by it in preparation for the hearing tonight, but it's surrounded by unimproved properties mostly, many of which are owned by the town of Exeter. As you go west, though, and you go towards the remainder of Powder Mill Road and then Juniper Ridge Road, you get into sort of a more densely settled R1 area, where the lots are actually quite significantly smaller than this lot, which is quite large. The issue here is that the entirety of the property, or most of it anyways, as depicted on Henry's plan, is in what's called a special flood hazard area, it's in the AE zone by the FEMA firm maps. And so there's a relatively high water table there. And when the Rups went to discuss the idea and the process for subdividing the property, they ran into the old ordinance, within which there was a provision, Article 5.3.3, which essentially incorporates the entirety of the subdivision regulations into the zoning ordinance. And there's a provision in the zoning, in the subdivision regulations, which says you can't have a septic system within 24 inches of the seasonal high water table. So that was the provision within the subdivision regulations, which are really incorporated into the zoning ordinance by Section 5.3.3. And so, working with Doug in the fall of last year, the direction was, go get variance relief from that provision. Henry, working on behalf of the applicants, prepared the application, filed it, appeared before the ZBA in November of 2022. It was a three-member board, but ultimately a unanimous decision to grant the relief that was necessary, with the lone condition that an enviro-septic system or equivalent line be installed when the property was subdivided. So that's sort of a foundational point I want to make clear. So in November, the only relief that the applicants needed to subdivide the property and to develop it with the new lot with a single-family residence and a septic system was relief from Section 5.3.3. So November approval. Thereafter, the Rups instructed Henry to do the survey, which is necessary to move forward with the subdivision process before the planning board, which takes time. And so survey did his, Henry did his thing, I can, I can say on behalf of Henry how busy he is. But surveying in the months of November, December, January, isn't great anyways, because of the lack of daylight. But process began and was continuous after the ZBA approval. And ultimately, in February of this year, Henry filed the minor subdivision application for the two lots. In the meantime, though, and really unbeknownst to the Rups, the planning board was proposing changes to the zoning ordinance. Among those changes was a proposed change to the Flood Plane Development Ordinance, Section 9.4.5 of the zoning ordinance, which flatly prohibits any septic systems in a special flood hazard area. And so when they filed their application in February, it was caught that, hey, the town meeting is contemplating this change to the zoning ordinance, which you might be caught behind. And the decision was made essentially that you need to go get additional variance relief from this new, or at that point, anticipated provision of the zoning ordinance. Of course, March town meeting came, the town meeting adopted it, because the planning board recommended it, and here we are. In the meantime, Doug and I had a bunch of conversations, because I, my perspective on this was that the common law rule of vesting was implicated, because in this case, you have an applicant who, in good faith, relies on the process and makes progress, gets relief, the only relief necessary, and then really, to their detriment, invests significant financial resources to get the survey and do the plan, only to find out that they need this additional relief. And in fairness to the town, the statute's not great, it really is focused on filings with the planning board, so the fact that they had already gone to the ZBA by reading of the statute is kind of irrelevant. And so the determination was made, you've got to go get this additional relief, which is understandable. That doesn't mean I don't still think that the vesting rule applies, I think this board has the jurisdiction to say, we don't need relief at all. We put that in our filing, if that's the purview and the desire of the board, obviously we would welcome that decision. But nonetheless, we're here on the variance criteria. So that's really the setup, we're here essentially requesting relief to put a septic system where septic systems are not allowed. I'm going to have Henry stand up, though, and sort of talk about the details of this proposal, which, as you'll see, contemplates citing a septic system, which is nearly three feet above the base flood elevation, and we'll get into it more when we talk about the variance criteria itself. But the purpose of the Flood Plane Development Ordinance, and particularly the purpose of prohibiting septic systems in this area, is a purpose that's very similar to the purpose of the subdivision regulation that they already have relief from, which is really, we want to protect the groundwaters, and we want to protect people and property from flood plane and flood incidents. And we think that this project and the proposal accomplishes exactly that, because the location of the septic system is going to be, as I said, almost three feet higher than the base flood elevation, when the ordinance only wants development two feet above it. So we think we're, it's copestic and aligned with the purposes of the ordinance itself, I'll get into that when the statutory criteria are addressed, but for now, I'll stop talking, I'll turn it over to Henry, he can go over the plan.
Before Henry comes up, if you don't mind, sir?
Sure.
I have two questions for you, Mr. Pesce. The first is, and this is a Henry question, but I know you know the answer to it. Is there anything different in how you will implement the plan that was originally proposed in November than the plan that would be being proposed today? Is there any difference between them whatsoever? None whatsoever? Thank you. Number two, since you mentioned it, if this board chose to simply say by vote that we feel that the approval that was granted in November is accurate and unquestionable, and the only criteria on that would be the enviro-whatever it's called, process that would be used, plus the standard three years you've got to finish it. Is there any downside to our doing that from your perspective?
No. Well, for two things. If there were a bunch of people in this room that were opposing the project, my answer would be, that it's novel, but I believe in our perspective on the law, I believe that the law is designed to protect people that are exactly in the Rups' position, who went through a process, spent a lot of money, didn't know that a change was coming, got the relief they needed, only to find out six months into the process that they need more relief, especially when the relief we're asking for is nearly identical than to the relief they already obtained. So I'm very comfortable in the position, and certainly this board has the authority under a case called Bartlett v. Manchester to make this determination, the Supreme Court has said, it is a threshold determination in every variance case for the board to determine whether or not variance relief is needed in the first place. So I think it's well within the board's purview, it's definitely aligned with our perspective on the case, and I think it really, it exemplifies the equities of this case, which really militate towards relying on that first, that first hearing.
Thank you. May I ask a question? Mr. Eastman?
Yes.
From the town's perspective, is there any downside
No.
To simply say, having this vote, having this board take a vote on the validity of the decision that was made in November?
Could you rephrase that?
Rather than have to go through and make an entirely new application, which they've already done, and have to go through it and
Right.
And rather than make a And rather than make a motion based on a reading of the criteria, and going through it again, essentially relitigating a case that was litigated in November?
Yeah.
What if this board was simply to say, we believe the decision made in November stands, that the procedurally, the applicant was caught, but the precedent that exists is that the, and I want help with the language, is that the decision was made in November still stands, despite the underlying change that was made subsequent to that? Do you see a downside to that at all?
No. And I encourage that, that the board make that decision. As Justin and I had talked earlier, that, and other members of our staff had said that I basically could have made that decision. I just felt uncomfortable. I thought it'd be better to either let the board make that decision, or go through the variance criteria, either or. My preference would be to have the board evaluate the situation and say, yes, we agree that the way this all went down.
Okay. I simply want to make sure, neither from the applicant's perspective nor from the town's perspective, and the fact that, as you've noted, there is nobody here
Yep.
To object from the town or others or anyone, so
The town planner and natural resource planner and I talked about this.
Everybody's comfortable with this application proceeding, it's how do we get there?
Exactly.
Fine.
And I was, I just felt uncomfortable making that decision on my own, and Justin had cited some case law on it, and I said, well, I still feel uncomfortable myself making that one decision.
That's right.
And I would prefer that, let's go to the zoning board, we'll file the application, and if they feel that that's the process that we take, then I'm great with that. It just saves a lot of, it's clean.
Okay.
You know what I'm saying?
All right.
Okay.
I'm not trying to cut you off, Henry.
Very quickly, just to supplement what Doug said, and the extent that board wants to entertain this idea, because I'm always prepared, I brought a letter that I sent to Doug in March, asking for this interpretation. If it makes sense, you could read it, or you could at least take it, and it's a part of the record, so that if there are any questions from anybody, it's like, this is the opinion that
Does there happen to be some suggested language for a motion that would make this clear?
Well, I think that motion would just be in accordance with the principles of the common law of vesting. We find that additional variance relief in this case is not warranted, and that the applicant has obtained the necessary relief to move forward to the planning board.
I've done all the talking, let me, if I may interrupt Mr. Pesce, again, or still, is there, are there any other questions on what I'm proposing here from members of the board?
I think what you're proposing makes sense, I think it might also make sense to take the letter and make it a part of the record.
Okay. Does anyone have any, Martha, you were, you're the only member of the board from November that's still here, that's, but you're not voting on this this evening.
I thought I was.
Oh, you are voting on this this evening, again. Are you comfortable with this, the path that I'm sort of going down?
Very comfortable.
Okay. We would like to do that, so if you have the letter, we will make that part of the, Henry, you're not going to get to talk to us.
That's okay.
It's okay.
Sit.
Wow, this looks like a memo. It's not just a, oh, oh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this point, I would like to pause and officially open this up to members of the public, and is there anyone here who would like to speak on behalf or against the application? Hearing none, I will close this public session, and we will move to deliberation, which, if not conclusive, we will reopen and we will go back, and Henry will get a chance to present to us. Are you comfortable with where we are?
Yes.
Is everybody okay with this?
Yes.
Would anyone like to make a motion? Keeping in lang, keeping in mind the language that Mr. Pesce used. I know.
Teresa, that's the problem.
Teresa, did you
No.
Come on, our resident lawyer.
But you're, as an attorney, do you feel more comfortable making the motion? Esther's ready.
Oh.
Okay.
But I, knowing her, she'd be happy to see the
I will happily have a lawyer use that language, those words.
My daughters look quite strange.
I don't know, okay. I would make a motion that
The zoning board determined that, under common law
Yes.
precedent
So, based on
I'm not leading the
The decision in November should stand based on the situation and the timing, and that the applicants were procedurally caught, and that the principles of common law applied specifically to Bartlett versus Manchester case, that was referenced, that I move that the decision in November on this application should stand.
Moved, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, is there discussion of the motion? Hearing none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
I'm not voting.
Oh, I'm not, I thought Martha's voting on this.
Martha is voting on this one.
But we want of you to vote to, to make it five.
Oh, aye.
And you said aye?
Aye, yes.
Chair votes aye. We're all set.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, I'm glad you went through that, enjoy the property. And I'm sorry you had to go through all of this, but it's probably better, this is called dotting i's and crossing t's, right?
Good, right.
It's sort of a very reasonable group of people.
All right, did I cut you out of a paycheck tonight? He gets, he gets paid, you, are you all right?
I still get to see you all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome, well, good luck, good luck.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Thanks, Justin.
Thank you guys, thank you, well done, thank you.
Moving on to other business, we have the minutes of April 11th to approve. As is usual, I didn't find anything.
Nope.
Let's see, remember, but I wasn't here.
Neither was I.
So, voting on this would be Esther, Teresa, and Laura. So do any of you have any comments, Esther, Teresa, or Laura, on the
Laura's not.
Laura Montagno?
I was here. There's two Lauras now.
I have one, just quick note on line 59, says Ms. Page said she looked up facility and locality, and I think that was Laura.
That was actually me, yeah, you're right.
So we're gonna modify 59 to say Ms. Montagno instead of Ms. Page at the beginning?
Yes.
And you were at this meeting?
She was.
So you should probably, you're not on the members present list.
Here she is.
Yes, I am.
Here she is?
Yeah.
Yeah, they both are.
Teresa Page, yep.
Oh, am I looking at the wrong ones?
No, they're both here.
See, I'm, I have, I have, his bonus paperwork has confused me, I'm looking at November, I'm looking at November.
You're looking at November, that's funny.
That's not gonna
Neither one of us were here for that one.
No, I wasn't either. Anything else on the April 11th minutes?
Not for me.
Motion to approve?
I move to approve the meeting minutes from April 11th, 2023.
As amended?
As amended.
Second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, three of you get to vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, minutes are approved 3-0. And it's time, my friends, for the annual election of officers.
Yay.
Full-time voting members can be officers, unfortunately alternates cannot. So the voting members are Laura Davies, Kevin Baum, Bob Pryor, Esther Olson Murphy, and Teresa Page. Mr. Baum has asked not to be an officer next year. Therefore, from amongst the four of Laura Davies, Bob Pryor, Esther Olson Murphy, and Teresa Page, is there interest in being an officer?
Is that what you're looking for?
Yeah. Because you're here, I mean, we can vote Laura into office in absentia, we'll get there, but I'm from amongst the two people on either side of me who are qualified to be officers, you're interested in being an officer next year?
Yes.
Okay.
I would be interested in being an officer of a certain level.
Okay.
Specifically clerk.
Well, we don't do, we do this office by office, there are three offices to be elected, chair, vice-chair, and clerk. I get the distinct impression that you're interested in being vice-chair but not in being chair.
You're a very smart man.
No, you said that earlier.
Yes, this is also true.
I get the distinct impression that you're interested in being either vice-chair or clerk but not chair.
That's correct.
Given this is your third meeting, I think that's appropriate.
I stumbled through my first motion, so
Okay.
You had a tough life.
Are there nominations for chair?
Can, as an alternate, can I nominate?
Alternates can nominate, and, oh!
Oh, you're interested in vice-chair, okay.
Alternates can vote, but they can't hold office. So, the first thing we need to do is determine from amongst the three alternates in the room, which two of you are going to vote on the candidates.
But that's mad. I'll vote.
I'll vote.
Fine. You okay with that, Martha?
Sure.
Okay. So, the five here are going to vote, would somebody and anyone, including Martha, can make a nomination?
Well, Bob, are you
For chair?
For chair.
Are you interested in being chair, Bob?
I would be chair, again, but this is the last time I will be chair.
Well, then we better take our chance when we get it.
Yeah, we better.
Don't lose out.
It's a limited time offer.
It's a limited time offer, I think my term is up next year. And I did actually try to look this up earlier.
I think it is.
I think, I think it is up next year.
Are the officers are annual?
Officers are for a one-year term, my term expires as of the April meeting next year, so in May next year, I'd be willing to be chair between now and the end of my next term, which will probably be my last on the zoning board.
Oh, oh, oh my. That was
No.
Well, I'm also
That's a lot, Bob.
I'm also retiring from my job.
Which means that you have more time to commit to the board.
That's what I was thinking.
Steady on there, kids, we'll cross that bridge and come to it.
Thank you, Bob.
You're welcome.
Makes me come on and then fails, get it.
Okay, I nominate Bob Pryor to be chair.
Thank you.
Second.
Moved and seconded. I get, this is so weird.
Voting yourself in?
All in favor?
Me, me, me.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Damn. I would like to nominate Esther Olson Murphy as vice-chair and Teresa Page as clerk for the coming year.
Second.
So a second.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
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 The ayes have it.
We have our candidates, we have our, we have our officers for next year, thank you very much.
Bob, I have a question.
Kevin will remain a voting member, he does not wish to be an officer.
I understand. Could he just be a regular member?
He'll just be a voting member, that's correct.
Well, did he re-up?
His term expires in April of 2026, so he has two more years to go.
But he said he didn't want to be chair.
Yeah, he didn't want to be
Fire this
Right, I looked back at his email, it did not seem like he was resigning from the board.
He's not resigning from the board, it's simply work conflicts often present, prevent him from being here.
I realize, but I thought his term was up this year.
April 2026, according to the town website.
26.
So 26.
What am I?
While you're there.
Same, April 2026.
Then we both will re-upped this last time.
Yep.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. So you'll remain an alternate for three more years.
Right, and, you know, if, if, if somebody knows of anybody who would like to be, then I gladly would.
We still have an open
We have an open slot, so you don't need to resign in order to get us a new one, so it's up
I just want to make sure
It's up to us to find
You're not taking it away from anybody.
Right.
Don't want to take it away.
Fair notice is that, in terms of Laura, you, because you, you are just, you have a one-year term, so yours is up next April, Laura Montagno. Joanne, you're up next
Stop filling out somebody else's, right?
You're up next April.
Right.
These will often automatically renew. And Esther, you and I are both up next April, so we need to, you know, make a positive or negative
Yep, decision.
Decision-making, make noises.
So if my
Dave Murzke's up in 2025, Laura Davies is up in 2025, everybody else is 2026.
So, if mine's up in 2024, you're up in 2024, you leave, does that mean I slide into a full voting?
There is the possibility that you could become a voting member, yes, you would need to apply for that.
I would have to apply for that.
Yeah, you would need to make
What, the board, the board just can't appoint her, or?
Why not?
I don't know that we can, I don't think we can do that.
I think on the application you have to check off
Yeah, alternate
Which, but I don't remember, I was an alternate at the start, and I don't remember interviewing twice.
You did an interview. I think you just
I think the board
Okay.
The select board would
I have my original application.
The select board would just
I don't think I applied for alternate.
You didn't apply for alternate, you applied for the board, but the spot that was open was, was as an alternate, because the open permanent slot, which was the spot that was made available through the death of Rick Thielbar, Teresa had already applied.
Right.
And so she was, she, they, she was slotted into the open
Right.
Voting member.
Okay.
Because I guess the application was probably dated before yours or something, I don't know.
Doesn't, doesn't matter, just want to know
Doesn't really matter.
Procedurally, I want to know.
You're certainly part of the board.
Yeah, and I do suspect that you could probably move up, I don't think there's going to be a mad rush to fill all the old board members next
Yeah, I don't think you'll have a problem.
Well, it depends on who steps down, I mean, if there's an open slot, then I think that you would be the logical person, but, you know, we'll see.
All righty.
Joanne, you could also become, are you, unless you're content to be on the alternate